We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is June 29th, 10:03, and all three county commissioners are here. So what I request with that, if everyone does not mind, due to a conflict, time conflict, and we never want to cause a problem with a judge, if we could go to new business item 10 slash E, and then we'll come back to the other items, then that is consideration to approve a field of interest agreement between the Mon County Commission and your community foundation in north central west Virginia to establish a field of interest fund to be known as the Mon County Impact Fund. And if you want to have a first...
Go ahead.
Yeah, first and a second, and then see if someone wanted to speak.
I move to approve agreement as presented, the amount of $300,000 with $150,000 being provided in fiscal year '22 and $150,000 being provided in fiscal year '23.
Second.
Pardon, moved in second. I was going to open up, if you would like, someone, Perry and...
Patty.
Patty, Perry and Patty, P and P.
Good morning, and on behalf of YCF and our board members, which includes Perry DeChristopher, we very much want to thank you for making this grant to YCF. As you are aware, YCF has an opportunity right now, the $1 million match campaign, and we are working hard to raise $1 million of unrestricted funds to help us provide more grant funds long-term for the area that we serve. The grant that you're making today will specifically help Montegalia County projects, people, programs indefinitely for a very long time. So we are very grateful for your gift and that this will also make a huge impact towards our $1 million goal that we are trying to achieve by December 31st of 2022. So we thank you for that. Unrestricted funds are incredibly difficult to raise, as you are aware, and this matching opportunity that's been presented to YCF by an anonymous donor is just simply amazing. And so your funds will be matched 100% from this gift by the anonymous donor. So with that, I'd like to have Perry say a few words as well.
So as Patty said, that gift is really for Montegalia County residents, really in perpetuity. It will be forever impacting Montegalia County residents. But the generosity of this county commission, knowing that it's going to be matched with the $1 million match that we have going on right now, will benefit really everyone that's in our counties of support, which is Montegalia County, Preston County, Taylor County, Harrison County, and Marion County. And so while the, certainly the donation of this county commission will be impactful in Montegalia County, what this commission has done is taken the opportunity to impact our neighbors. And really what a benefit they are getting from that, and how blessed are they to have this county commission nearby, willing to help out not only our county, but adjoining counties who really may not have the benefits and the opportunities that our county has. And so we want to thank you all on behalf of our county, but thank you on behalf of everyone that will be impacted by this, folks that may not have any other resources, folks that may not have anyone else to turn to for these type of funds. Now they will have, really, in Montegalia County in perpetuity, and really hopefully with the rest of our counties in perpetuity, will always have somewhere to ask for help. And so we appreciate that so very much.
Sean, did you want to...
Yeah, the way this, the way this fund works is, once you raise the million dollars, you will receive a matching grant of a million dollars. So you'll have a $2 million fund, which you will then use the proceeds from that fund to fund opportunities that arrive, that arise in the future. So for Montegalia County's part, how we came up, for the public knows how we came up with that $300,000 number, is we just looked at the populations across all the county. And if you straightlined it, our fair share would be about 380,000. So we thought $300,000 was a very fair start, which will give you guys a lot of momentum to get other, to guilt other commissions into providing their part. But again, you know, here in Mon County, we're lucky to be able to make this contribution. The million dollar, the way that, the way it works is, you know, our contribution goes to help Mon County residents. So that 300,000, a part of that million goes to help Mon County residents, but the second million can also help our residents. So we could, you know, in any given year, depending on the proceeds, our citizens would receive either anywhere from 15%, a minimum of 15% to 65% of everything that's paid out that year. And so that'd be the absolute high end, the absolute low end. But again, our citizens will get a benefit. But we're also helping in that matching part, and we're also helping our neighbors. That's where we're helping our neighbors out. So I'm happy that we were, you know, thankful to our citizens that we're able to make this contribution.
We have a theme here that we like, the dollars we grant and spend on infrastructure and things to make dollars. Every dollar we invest in infrastructure, we invest in something, we like to get a matching dollar, or luckily, hopefully $10 more. This isn't immediate, we give a dollar, they give a dollar. So your foundation does great work. It's a later starting foundation, as you told us, as others in the state. So we're playing catch-up to places like Canola County that have big endowments, and hopefully we can get you there here in the coming years. And this is a nice start, so we're happy to participate, and we appreciate all the work that you all do.
I do remember, Patty, when you first came, I don't know how many years ago.
Six years now. I've been there, but we're now 11 years old.
Right, but I remember when it was first started, and it was really zero dollars. And it was a concept. And you came before us, and the commission then even said, "We're going to support you." And we did it just verbally. And then we were able to do it monetarily. And I think it's very rare, as Sean said, that we are able to come up with some funds that are going to be doubled the match, and the services will be doubled by a donor from this area. Usually it's another governmental agency, the state or the feds. So I think all three of us are very excited to be a part of this, and hopefully you'll be able to use this as a stepping stone for other county commissioners and commissions, and even cities to help offer, you know, their services. And hopefully you'll reach that million dollar goal. With all those, it's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes? We look forward to it. And I know you have a camera, do you want a picture so you can use it for your PR?
We would love a picture if there's time to do that, if you prefer. We wait till the end of the meeting?
No, let's do it now.
Okay, fantastic.
Hold on, let me, is this the, yeah. We're signing it right now, so it's, this and $2 gets you a cup of coffee, it's sheets.
Does $2 still get you a cup of coffee?
Yeah, I think you get it for $1.65, the smaller.
Not that you're counting.
Not that I'm, hey, the Jewish guy, you know. I was going to bring out the shovel.
Yeah.
Sorry, we ran out of our big checks.
Yeah.
I got a big bill more checks.
Big checks, yeah.
Do we need to bring the paperwork?
Yes, Patty.
But we'd like for, Perry won't be in the picture. No, 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 no.
Okay, let me sit in between, you know how it's got to be? You're evenly balanced, so we don't want to get in trouble.
All right, 3, 2, 1. All right, we'll take another one, so goodbye. 3, 2, 1. You have the whole Montegalia County in the background?
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And please just keep us informed with how it's going, that would be real. Even if you want to just send a monthly, here we're close to goal, maybe we can get it, help you promote it.
Okay, we appreciate that, we will.
In fact, I'll even ask if you're interested, if the commissioners say it's okay, if you wanted us to write a letter saying how we endorse it, so you could use it for all those, you know.
We have conversations with others going on right now, so that would absolutely be very helpful.
Yeah, we will come up with a letter, jokingly, as long as it doesn't go to the city. What is wrong? Great, well, thank you. And if you have to leave, be our guest, we understand this is so riveting here, that, you know. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now have consent and approval, county administrator. Good morning, welcome back.
Thank you. We have eight exoneration for $2,370.78, minutes for June 22nd, 2022. Vouchers, general county, $307,606.70. Chestnut Ridge Park, $26,106.74. Camp Muffley, $33,460.12. Mason Dixon Park, $5,050.93. Mon County Center, $5,009.14. Reallocated coal, $120,000. Payroll, $1,000,16,514.43. Purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, $20,002.13.42. Magistrate Court, $61.81. 911, $2,067.04. Home confinement, $5,086.33. Chestnut Ridge Park, $325.73. Camp Muffley, $923. Mason Dixon Park, $152.96. Mon County Center, $369.00 for a voucher total of $1,545,170.90. Position vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website, fiduciary orders for June 29th, 2022. And then we have two separate fiduciary items that need your approval.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Pardon, moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now the fiduciary orders.
Okay, the objection to an interim accounting in the estate of Robert A. McNeil, Sr.
Good move that we refer this objection to the fiduciary commissioner.
I would second that motion.
Pardon, moved in second, all those in favor.
Hang on, just a second. So in one of these estates, the fiduciary department asked if you would set a...
Time.
...time frame in order for the person to make the deposit for the hearing.
60 days.
Is this the one?
Is this 30 or 60? What, you're the lawyer.
Well, this is just discretionary, how long of a time period for the hearing. I think to place the deposit within 30 days. If you go 60, it pushes it out to four months, so.
So we'll modify the motion that it would be within 30 days to make the deposit?
Yeah.
Okay, so it properly moved in second with the modification?
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes, that's number one.
Okay, the second one is the, an objection to the appraisement filed in the Dennis Winslow Allen estate.
And this one would refer back to the fiduciary commissioner to make a determination on the objection. It's within the fiduciary commissioner's purview to make that ruling. At this time, the interim accounting has been filed, and there was an alleged omission in that filing. So I spoke with the fiduciary commissioner's office this morning, and they said they would take another look at it. And it's within his power to require a refiling of that if need be.
Okay, I would second that motion.
Okay, so pardon, moved in second, refer, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, introduction of new employees. I know Perry had to leave, but we have two people in the prosecuting attorney's office.
Morgan Boils, the vacant position of administrative assistant/receptionist. Her position is effective on July 11th with a yearly salary of $34,000.
Okay, do we have two, you want to mention the two for her?
I could do both. The second is Brittany LaRue, is hired for the vacant position of administrative assistant. Her position would be effective July 5th with a yearly salary of $37,000.
Now move that we approve the two positions as presented.
Second.
Pardon, moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one.
Well, we have Jacob Naughts, part-time seasonal staff at Camp Muffley. His date of hire, start date, let me see that on here. It's not on here. His salary would be $12 per hour, so he is not eligible for benefits.
Move to approve.
Second.
Pardon, moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning, Jimmy.
Yeah, I saw that.
But she's following her career path.
I'd like to introduce two new employees this morning. The first is Jonathan Thorne, he'll be starting on July 1st, and his probationary rate will be 19, 18 per hour. And Dave Shaver, who will be starting July 18th with a probationary rate of 19, 18 per hour.
Move to approve the positions as presented.
Second.
Pardon, moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chestnut Ridge Park.
We have a transfer, Nicholas Philippelli, I believe. He is transferring from Mason Dixon Park to office manager at Chestnut Ridge Park, and that was effective on the 27th, June 27th.
Move to approve the transfer as presented.
Second.
Pardon, moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have executive director, well, Kasa.
Yes. Jamie Curry has been interviewed and will be a full-time outreach and engagement specialist for Kasa for kids. And her, she's full-time, $35,000 a year with full benefits effective July 1st.
Move to approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
Pardon, moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And do we have one more?
Yeah, you actually approved last week, but he actually started, so Jeff?
You want to come on down, Jeff? Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
How are you all today?
Great.
As was stated, this is Josh Kishner, he was on the agenda last Wednesday, and I just wanted to bring him up to introduce him officially to you all.
Welcome, Josh, we're glad to hear, glad to have you here.
Thank you.
I need my computer fixed. Get used to that.
You'll be visiting Mr. Bloom a lot.
I pound my computer a lot, he will tell you.
Big red arrow that says on button.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
Thanks for coming.
Any other introductions?
That's enough.
Okay, that's enough for today, okay. We now have comments from the public, would anyone like to come down and publicly comment? Anybody from, do you want to say anything again, or not? It's up to you. Okay, seeing none, comments be closed, okay? Great, we now have an important presentation from Mon EMS, and we appreciate all the work that, whilst you've been putting into this, and for the services that it will provide. So that will be your brand opening.
Thank you, Commissioner Bloom, and the rest of commissioners.
My name is Forrest Wine, I'm, as you all know, Forrest Wine with the executive director for Mon EMS. And I came to you all a few months ago, you know, we've been having this conversation now for the better part of two years, discussing the EMS needs in and around the state, and specifically Mon County. And I appreciate the time to chat with us, and I also want to give my thanks to the commission staff who have been really great in navigating this, the levy process, which, as you all know, if you're looking through the document, there's 850 pages to fill out three forms, which gets complicated some, so it's a, it's a labor of love for sure. So I'm here today to talk about the EMS levy, and some of the numbers that we got to, and continue this conversation with you all. You know, so Mon EMS was formed, as you all know, in 2019 as the merger of Mon Health and W Health Team. And we provide services to Mon County focusing on three values of compassion, integrity, and safety. And our goal is to be a regional leader in EMS, not only just in West Virginia, but in the mid-Atlantic central region. And we're governed by a nonprofit board of directors, which does include both an administrator and a physician from both of the health systems. Your county has a seat on that board, and also has some community representatives on there. So I always like to make sure we hit on who our governance is. As we've discussed before, EMS is in crisis. You all can see, you don't have to look far down the news feed to see an EMS agency struggling or collapsing due to funding or other various need things around the state. We've talked before about how many agencies have closed recently, we've had some very close by that have had some struggles, and that's a very frightening thing. And it's not just West Virginia, it's happening around the US. There are agencies that are folding, there are places in this country where response times equal multiple hours, which, if you think about, you're needing an ambulance and waiting multiple hours, that's a big thing. We're not to that point yet, but it's not just specific to Mon County, it's not just specific to West Virginia, it is a nationwide crisis. And I applaud this commission for being progressive and actually, you know, trying to work together and working with us, partnering with us to try to solve the solution for our citizens. So I've hit on this before, but I think it was a really great thing that you all did back in 2018, 2019, was partner with two of the largest health systems in West Virginia to try to solve this EMS problem. You know, we had two competing EMS agencies here, and the fact that we got two competing health systems to work together to create a neutral agnostic service, so, you know, Mon EMS doesn't necessarily have a preference where you get your care, we'll take you to your health system. Our goal is to provide that level of care from your home to the facility that you want to go, and make sure that you're getting the highest quality of care in doing so. And that was a really great move on your part and the health systems' part, and something that a lot of counties don't have two health systems in them, so it was a really great unique solution to that. Since that merger, Mon EMS serves the county from Blacksville to Cheat Lake down to Clinton District, we're partnered with some fire departments out in those areas. Since the merger, we've added a couple stations, both downtown and Saberton, just based on call volume and demand, trying to make sure that we keep services in areas where people live, where they have access to the care that they need. So why am I here today? We all know that the EMS system is fundamentally broken in, just in the US in general. EMS is only reimbursed if we actually transport someone to a hospital. So all the things that we get reimbursed for is actually transporting someone, so that if the car wrecks that get canceled, the overdoses that get reversed, the people that don't, you know, we go and lift somebody off a floor, those are our costs that we don't necessarily get reimbursed, and they probably frankly shouldn't be. The part of that model is also fundamentally broken, because it's really hard to invest in things if the only way to make money is to actually get the ambulances to be doing something, because then if I have a heart attack, or if I can get into a wreck on a certain part of the county, but that ambulance is out doing something else, they're not there for you. So it's a fundamental problem with just the EMS industry in general. And no matter how efficient I get in EMS system, which I think we've done really well in the last three years, is that there's still a readiness cost, there's still a cost that we have to tie back to, that we want an ambulance available, or we want a few ambulances available for this county, to make sure that there are services available for our citizens. So how does this partnership work? I talked about it a little bit, but where we get some really good economies of scale is that, I'll start in the bottom left-hand corner, the patients that need transport from the health systems, yeah, we do do a part of that, and there's a whole bunch of EMS systems that do.
Forrest, just to make sure we're on the same page, would you note what slide you're on?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
We're doing paper copy, you're doing...
I'm on slide nine right now, yes.
I was almost there, I was...
I am trying to move fast, to be positive of your time, but yes, I'm on slide nine right now.
Take your time.
So this gets into, the hospitals need to definitely fund the patient transport part of their, transport coordination, non-emergency patient movement, patients that don't meet medical necessity, that absolutely is a hospital thing. The patients that we actually do transport, all of your insurances, most of the insurances are Medicaid, your Medicare's, your commercial insurances, all have a provision for EMS coverage, so like if we transport someone, that's very fair that those insurances are billed, and we get reimbursed for that. But that readiness piece is what I'm here to talk about today, and the fact that we all want to make sure that if someone in our family or us gets into some sort of a situation where we need an ambulance, we want to make sure that those ambulances are there, that the folks are trained and equipped and ready to go, and that we have that as a long-term sustainable solution. Where this partnership gets really efficient is, the overlapping circles is the overhead and the economies of scale, because we're not duplicating services throughout all these different aspects, we're actually, the training, the education, the overhead, and the fleet services, and the supply costs, and all that is all ran in under that shared part of that Venn diagram. So what is readiness? This is kind of silly, put a quote in here, but basically, you know, it is being fully prepared for something. And there's three problems, and why this is, it works against the EMS model is that there's some problems on the volume-based model, I'm on slide 10 now, is that no matter how, and I've already talked to this point, but no matter how efficient an EMS system gets, we only get reimbursed for patients that are transported to a hospital. There are a few exceptions, but mainly that's the main way the ambulances are reimbursed, which is totally, it doesn't support that readiness cost. If all, and to the other point, if all of our ambulances are actually out doing something, that makes it a little bit difficult for us to actually be able to take care of you if you could dial 911. And frankly, as healthcare is evolving, and the services EMS provides, the hospital and the emergency department is not necessarily the right destination for every patient. Some people need to go to other places like urgent care, their primary care physician, or mental health care, or something to that effect. And EMS can help drive those patients to those places. So let's talk a little bit about why, I'm on slide 11 now. The, I'll ring a bell every time I... Yeah. So let's talk about, I took a, last year and took a snapshot for you, and the easiest way to think about this is, for Mon EMS, it takes about 6.2 calls a day for an ambulance to break even. Now that's making an assumption that all the patients that we call have insurance, and that all of those patients go to a hospital, now remember that. But I'll play with that assumption for this moment. 6.2 calls a day. So looking at this slide, if you were going to open up an EMS agency in Mon County, you would open one downtown, and you would open one in Evansdale, because both of those lines are above the red line. All the others fall between the two and the six line, and that's calls per day, and that's what that zone, our county is divided up into zones that Jimmy and his team and Mon EMS worked on as far as route of travel and that type of thing. But what that does is, you start to look at the economics of an EMS system, like that's just not going to make sense. And especially if you look down at that very bottom line, that Blacksville line, that ambulance averages .8 to 1.2 calls a day. That's not going to be an economically viable model out there. Yet, I want our citizens out in that area to have coverage, I'm sure you all do, and you know, the folks that live out that way, that live and work in those areas, want to have access to that care, want to have it. So I'm going to dig into an example here, so I've slipped up to slide 12 now. Cheat Lake, the break-even point, once again, is 6.2 calls a day. Once again, that same caveat, that all patients are transported, and then everyone has some sort of reimbursable insurance. That right now, or excuse me, in 2021, the Cheat Lake area, that area east of the lake, and just basically the Tyron Road area over to the east, that whole area averaged three calls a day, which does not make it financially viable to be an ambulance in that area. However, we all, you know, I live in the Cheat Lake area, I want an ambulance available if something happens to me. But looking at what that means for us, I got an example down there. Right now, we're currently located, we have a landlord that we're using in a former doctor's office, and the landlord has been very good working with us. I'm using the Bruce Slager Road, which is a road right before you get to the county line on Fair Chance Road. Coming from that doctor's office, it takes about eight minutes to get there. Our next two closest EMS stations are the Saberton Station and J.D. Anderson. So if something happened on that road, it would take us better part of 20, 25 minutes to get there if we were coming from anywhere other than the Cheat Lake area. So having those resources in that area is super important. Jumping out, I've jumped up to slide 13 now. Same thing with Blacksville, I talked to you a minute ago about being about one call a day. We've talked to Elliot Statler, you all know, out on the western end, there's not an easy way to get to a lot of places. Out of the gate, you know, it takes 12 to 15 minutes to get a lot of places. Making sure that our folks in those areas have access to EMS resources is super important, and we want to be in that area as well. And lastly is, digging into some of these costs, I'm on slide 14, is, you know, we all are very familiar with what happened a few weeks ago with the homeless shelter and the former Ramada insight, and it is, that happened in an evening time, and, you know, when the reports were first coming out, and Jimmy and I were getting phone calls, you know, we had, you know, 40, 50, 60 people displaced, we didn't know people were trapped, we didn't know people were injured, so we of course have to send the cavalry, because it could be a very serious situation. Luckily, thankfully, no one was hurt, we were able to find everyone, but basically we had a bunch of displaced folks. But we ended up with, you know, a tractor trailer, some disaster equipment, mass casualty equipment, multiple people on scene. And to think of, the piece of that to remember is, is that events like that, I don't, I can't bill your insurance for. That's not a thing that, because we didn't take you anywhere, we didn't, we didn't take those patients anywhere, they didn't go anywhere, but we were there as a resource, much needed at the time, and obviously we were able to de-escalate after three or four hours and get all those folks properly placed. But the thing is, is that the EMS system is not built for that. So it starts to dig into why some of these readiness costs are super important. Commissioner Bloom, I know you love this slide, I'm up to slide 15.
15.
15.
I know he's a fan of this slide and this slide is one that discusses understanding an EMS bill. So, this is a random bill that we pulled and we ran through four different models. This particular bill was about $940. So, if a patient, I like to work this slide from right to left. The one on the far red and the one, the reason that's red is it's self-pay is that we basically bill the patient, they don't have insurance. That happens a very low percentage point of the time, about 9%, but of those times when we send a bill to a patient, of that 9%, only about 8 to 9% of the time does the patient actually pay that bill. So, that's the reason that's red, because that's a very low portion. Commercial insurance, the insurances that a lot of us have, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, the Aetna, the Peak, whatever, what have you, our insurance, we bill that, your insurance pays X number of dollars, you pay a copay and that comes in. So, then you get over to your government payers and I think a really key point to this is that we, everybody gets the same bill, we can't, we can't be unfair with that, so everybody has to get the same bill. But, Medicare and Medicaid, they pay X dollars. Medicare, you do get a small copay, just like a normal commercial insurance, but then for playing in the federal healthcare system, we have to write off the rest of that, it's called a contractual allowance. So, that yellow bar on here, that's not something that we can go after the patient for. The federal government says, "Thank you, here's your $285 payment, please write off the rest of this bill, thank you for taking care of our patient, next item." That's a huge, that's a much bigger conversation than we can have at Mon County, it's a much bigger conversation than we can have in West Virginia. We're working with federal folks to try to raise those rates and to have that conversation. That's not something we're going to solve today, but I think it's a really important piece to see, especially when, if you add up those two bottom numbers, the 75% of the patients that we transport fall into that category of being a Medicare/Medicaid patient.
Could you just, for clarification, if the public understands what you just said, the yellow is what you're not getting?
I'm not getting it, I'm not...
That's why I want the public to realize, so you're only getting the green part of it.
Correct.
You have to write off those two.
Correct.
That's why I want real clear to the public.
Yes.
Okay.
So, moving on to slide 16, so just a real quick snapshot on what's happening with the 911 volume in Mon County. This goes back to January of 2021 and you've seen that probably in the last 18 months, we've jumped up pretty significantly as far as the number of 911 calls. Jumping up to slide number 17, this only goes back about a year, I'm sorry, goes back two years, but this is the non-billable 911 calls. See, these are 911 calls that we go on that meet that criteria that we can't send a bill to them anyway, didn't really, didn't really do anything. So, we start to put all these pieces together of why I'm here today, I'm trying to want to paint a picture of where all that's coming from. So, let's move over to what's happening in West Virginia. I'm up to slide 18 now. You commissioners have seen this slide before, but I want to make sure we include it in here, that about 60% of counties in West Virginia, plus or minus one or two, that's based on recent news and elections and that type of thing, fund EMS in some capacity. That span is anywhere from, I like to use per capita, because I think it helps for us to measure counties against each other, so the more populous counties versus the more rural counties. The counties that fund those go between 22 cents per person up to 221 a person, with the state average of hitting right around 47.94. So, how does that, whoa, go back one here. So, how's that look from around the county? I'm up to slide 19 now. These are other 911-based, county-based EMS systems that do very similar stuff that we do, they're not all, they're not identical to Mon EMS, but they're pretty similar. When we start looking around the country at systems that, when you all think of model EMS systems, these are the ones that you're thinking about or you read about and you look at their per capita costs, you see where that sort of ranks with where West Virginia is. So, based on our conversations and the work that we've done, we wanted to ask for a four-year levy of $21 million and change. What that equals out to is about, starting out at about $4.6 million for FY '24 with a small increase year-to-year, just because we know that things will slowly get more expensive as things go on. There's a more detailed breakdown in your packets that you all can see, but I'll jump to the, to the slide number 22. So, how does that compare statewide? Looking at the breakdown here, Jefferson County is, on a per capita basis, is about $67 a person. The Western State average, once again, is at 47.94. What we're proposing drops Mon County in about the 43.94 mark, so we're under the state average. And then obviously I have a comparison slide on here as well, or a table on here on where that fits into, based on a $100,000 valuation in Mon County as far as the per dollar amount. So, what would you all get with that? Obviously, if I'm a businessperson, I want to know on the other side of that. Obviously, we continue to do, the thing that is sort of hidden in the weeds here is that the health systems have already been doing a lot of this and funding a lot of this readiness on their backs and we will have minimum number of ambulances available per day and I think that's a discussion point down the road of how many that is based on the time of day, continue with your disaster response, well, can you, continue with all the special situations. We need to start building in long-term infrastructure, so I mentioned earlier that we're in a doctor's office in the Cheat Lake area, that's very nice and I love our landlord, they're great and I appreciate them not increasing our rates. However, that ambulance is not in a garage, you know, we don't have, I don't have all the facilities that I would like to have for a place that staff 24 hours a day and we need to start building some of that. I don't need Taj Mahal, but I want to make sure that our folks have good, safe places to work and come back and decontaminate their equipment and be ready for the patients that may need us. And the one piece of this, I want to be very clear on this, is that this is all for 911 service for the county. Special events, so like W Athletics, football games, you know, as you all can imagine, those games take 30, 40 people to run a football game from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. W pays the full bill on that. Basketball games, sporting events, things that happen in this county, if someone wants a dedicated EMS service, they pay for, if you see an ambulance there and they don't leave, that event is paying for that, because that is, that is more than what, that event is wanting specialized, dedicated covers to provide for that event. So, those events all pay their way as far as if they want their own ambulance ready for their event. So, with that, try to be as quick as possible, what questions do you all have for me?
One quick question.
Yes.
Do you have the levy format?
I do.
Okay, so you are presenting that to us?
Yes.
Do you want to go ahead and bring that up? Okay. And the way this works for us is obviously, we don't have an agenda item on our, on our agenda. You come make a presentation, the commission will note receipt of the levy, we'll start doing our due diligence and at the same time, we'll have the state auditor do his due diligence with it. We may have some questions, we may have some back and forth and then we'll schedule a future, on a future, in a future meeting, our decision and where, how we're going to go forward.
Excellent.
So, that's just kind of the process, process part.
Totally appropriate.
Thank you for all your work in putting this together. I think it is eye-opening in regards to, you know, the services that you are providing and so everybody understands where these funding shortfalls currently come from is the hospital systems that support the, that support the entity that was created, Mon EMS. So, if these reimbursements go down, the hospitals' contributions go up. So, they're the ones that are currently funding that. When we converted, when we converted the services back in 2019, you know, we noted then that what, you know, how lucky we are in Mon County, we have two health systems that are able to grab this support, because no other county in the state has that level of, has that, two premier health systems in the same county and, also two health systems that are involved in our community. So, I applaud the two hospitals for, you know, working with us initially to put this together. I knew at that time that it was, this is still, we're getting something for nothing and now in, in our conversations we've had over the past couple of years, we've acknowledged that the commission, the citizens, however we go about it, need to be part of the solution. So, that's what this is all about. So, I'm really interested in digging into this and, you know, moving forward with our decision and I'll certainly do that. I do want to point out one thing, just a small typo.
Sure.
That comparison that you showed, there's this one word correction on page, on slide 22, the cost per 100,000 of appraised property value.
Oh, okay.
Because your house is appraised at 100,000, it's assessed at 60% of that.
Gotcha, okay.
And that is, so if somebody owed a $100,000 house, that 2803, if that's, if it's owner occupied, that's what they would pay per year.
Thank you for that.
So, just so those numbers don't get jumbled, but again, we're going to be tossing around a lot of numbers and it'll be easy to get confused, but I've, you know, we've had these discussions multiple times over the past years and, and again, I certainly think that the commission needs to be a part of the solution. So, I'm really interested on my part to tearing into this and see how we need to move forward.
Awesome.
Just thank you for coming in.
Sure.
I had one, you mentioned the athletic events, one question, if you have Clay Batell, Morgantown University, all have a Friday night game the same night, you've got to have an ambulance at each one of those games, right?
Correct. We have EMT class starting next month, if you're interested. Yes, sir, and we have agreements with the school board and we work out all those details on the backside.
We know all the work you put into this and we thank you and we'll take it under advisement.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, and thank you for those comments, Commissioner Secora, the, I do think the one thing, and I think it's kind of overlooked a little bit because we're kind of at this point, is that the health systems coming together, I think was a really great thing and, you know, we all, we live in this county and we know that those two health systems compete, but, you know, I'm really excited about the fact that they're working together on this, you know, we're Switzerland in this deal and I think that it was a really smart idea to get, we've had a few years of runway to sort of work out the kinks, get some efficiencies built in and really come to you all with a really, really good product and I think sometimes that gets overlooked and I'm really excited about that, so.
No, and response times have improved, so there has been a benefit, so just by virtue of response times improving, you're saving lives, you know, so it is, it is working and we're interested in trying to, you know, we're having these problems all across the state, we're having these problems even in our own county where EMS services are hard to, hard to fund. So, we're certainly interested in being part of the statewide conversation here locally to see what we can do to address, address these concerns, so. And thank you, I mean, I know that we've leaned on you a lot, Delegate Statler's leaned on you a lot, he's had you go to state to testify as a, you know, so you're like the foremost authority on the state and we're lucky to have you here in Mon County. So, I do really appreciate all your hard work and we will certainly try to make sure to order of our process, I'd say a couple of weeks we should be able to, maximum, we should be able to decide what to do.
Yeah, I'm known to give little initials for amendments and I've already coined it's the PFR, Prepare for Readiness. And to me, that is the key. It's very simple. If we want to have a system and when something happens, we want to have that ambulance ready for us, it's a very minimal cost and that's, I appreciate everything you've done, we will look at it. Again, just for clarification, so people know, we acknowledge it, we will review it and then come back if there's some questions and then we will vote on it to be put on the ballot, but we appreciate all the work you've done.
Awesome, thank you all.
And again, just to be perfectly clear, just the first number you threw out, a $100,000 home assessed at, I mean, assessed at 60,000, if it's a $200,000 home, assessed at 120, you know, that person's about 56 bucks a year.
That's what...
To make sure that when you need an ambulance, that ambulance is going to be there as quickly as possible. So, when a member of your family needs an ambulance, that you're going to, you know, if you live in those areas, the western end, the eastern end, even in central.
Yeah.
I mean, I live in, I live in Morgantown and, you know, in the middle of traffic or football Saturday, from your location to my, to my house is probably a mile, mile and a quarter, but it could take you, it's taken me 45 minutes to get from there to my house in traffic.
Oh, sure.
So, it's just, again, it's an investment to make sure that that readiness is there, so that's what I think people need to really understand.
Exactly.
I forgot Trinity, so there could be four on a given Friday night.
It gets complicated, you can have a long conversation with our operations folks because they...
Yes.
And the biggest thing is, is that if you do have a special event, the earlier the better, because if we have less than 30, 45 days notice, it gets really complicated because we are juggling a whole lot of plates in the air.
Right.
Yeah, we were in that meeting, Tom and I were in that meeting last Wednesday and I'm texting him, asking him about service for the fair, you know, and what, how you organize it, because they hadn't thought about that at that moment, they hadn't actually made the calls to see and understand or working with Dylan on that.
Yes.
I got that off my plate and it's off your plate.
No comment on that one.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
Really appreciate it. Collin Coon, grants, no grants, all right, okay. Letter received from Upper Mon River Association, Inc.
They are requesting the commission's support of $24,000 to be able to added, to be able to add to the account that reimburses the Army Corps of Engineers for staffing of the Mon River locks. If you remember several years ago, probably six or seven, the Army Corps of Engineers had considered closing the locks and removing the staff, or at least minimize, minimal staffing. And so, through AMRA, the commission is helping support. We do the administrative part of keeping that account and they'll send a requisition and we send them payments. That fund gets replenished by contributions from Marion County Commission, from the Morgantown Area Partner, well, was the Morgantown Area Partnership, Morgantown Area Partnership, that's what it is now. So, I don't know what you want to do.
I would like to ask you hold off, because I have a meeting Wednesday morning at 9:00 with the commander and 14 people and that was one of my questions where I asked to see from Barry all the different agencies that were giving money and it was clear that I think we were given an extreme amount of money compared to everyone else, so I want to just...
Technically, the commission hasn't contributed to this fund. We have given them a small amount for the last couple of years, I think, to cover their insurance for their group, but we have not actually contributed, the county has not contributed to this account.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would suggest we move this to work session.
Sure, okay, and I'll have more information on Wednesday.
Do you want me to set up a work session?
No, no, I mean to, I'm sorry, work session, staff reports.
Business session, staff reports, okay. That's one of the meetings I'm going to.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Yes, business session. Any other correspondence?
No.
I do have one piece of correspondence. I was at Blacksville last week for their senior dinner and while we were there, their hot water heater went out. So, Joe tried to fix it, of course, normal Joe, you can't hold him down, he rolls his sleeves up and tries to fix it, but the next day I put a work order in and Carlos and the gang went out there. Now, they got it started, but they also did their due diligence and checked and there wasn't, they put a carbon dioxide detector in the kitchen because there wasn't one and they, it was going off every time the hot water tank kicked on. So, they went ahead and they checked the flue and due to the age of the hot water heater, they ended up replacing the hot water heater and put in an electric one. So, anyhow, I did want to note the email from Ruby Brewer, who runs the senior center up there. "Thank you for jumping into action again, Carlos Goss and his crew to our facility so quickly to resolve our hot water tank issues. We greatly appreciate all the hard work they did. Please pass our appreciation on to Carlos and his crew, they did an excellent job." So, I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you. Joe Glenda said maybe they can reach out to YCF if they need a... No, but no, I appreciate what you did on that, Sean, thank you. Are there any other correspondence? Any unfinished business? Seeing none, okay, we'll go to new business. Consider for approval, master service agreement with Lit Communities for Phase 2 support of contract awarded in response to RFP 2021 MCC-001, the broadband initiative.
I move to approve the president signing the master services agreement MCC-MSA-0001 with Lit Communities Broadband, Inc., once the agreement has been approved by Lit Communities.
Second.
Properly, with discussion, did you want to close?
Yeah, so what, we have the draft agreement.
Correct.
They're going through it right now, that's why my motion was very specific. Once they approve it, then you go ahead and sign it and assuming if there's something, if there's small immaterial changes, then we can work back in... if there's small immaterial changes, then we can work back and forth. But it is a very simple document. It just outlines the Ts and Cs that they're going to provide support under issued task orders. So there is no dollars, it's just the shell that they'll actually do work, and the actual task orders, which we have a work session scheduled for next week, the actual task orders will come under task order, will come under future task orders, which we'll have to approve as a commission. So it's really just setting up the parameters under which they'll do work, so there's no, we don't have to go through that. It's not an individual war each time, it's just a simple task order to the master agreement.
Okay, since Prop moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes. "Consideration to renew the support contract with Global Science Technology for County Commission Network Support Administration and Consulting."
This is your normal yearly maintenance agreement, not maintenance, I'm sorry, support, network support administrative consulting. Is there a difference?
I move that we approve the agreement for continuing support from GST as presented.
Second.
Prop moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
The pricing is the same, the pricing is the same as last year.
What is that?
$5.60 a month.
$5.60 a month, okay, so.
Sorry, I interrupted.
No, that's right, $5.60 a month, I was gonna say. Okay, Prop moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
"Consider for approval, the service agreement with W West Virginia Network for County Commission Email Virus and Spam Filtering."
It's $1,000 per year.
Okay.
Move to approve the service agreement as presented.
Second.
Prop moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
"Consideration to prove a funding request for MUB, for Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day being held on August 6th."
I move that we approve the request for $5,000 from the county commission to help defray the costs related to hazardous waste collection day 2022.
Second.
Prop moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've done item A. Is there any other new business items?
Yep.
One clarification. Last week, we took an action that wasn't necessary. Did we just want, that was the-
Use Services.
Use Services, Morgantown Area, Use Services.
Not Use Services, Morgantown Area Services Project.
Yeah.
So they, we made, we motioned to take funding from fiscal year '24 and move it to '23 so that we can pay their bill because they need it. But the grants came through, and now they don't need that action, so I wanted to point out, it makes most sense if we leave the things as they were, because they have funding in this year's budget to go ahead and pay it, so we don't have to do any actions, so.
Okay, so they'll have access to the full $12,000.
Right. They got the actual money from the actual grant that was supposed to pay for. It finally came in.
So I, do we want to motion to reverse that action, or just note that?
I would just note it.
Yeah, just note that we will-
Again, just being totally transparent, I wanted to make sure that we, it was noted that that action, after all, that we voted on it, but it wasn't necessary.
Okay. Reports from elected officials or department supervisors? Anybody? Okay. Seeing none. Reports from county commissioners?
Couple. Commissioner Bloom and I attended a groundbreaking for the new Owens and Minor WVU collaboration for an assembly and production facility at West Ridge up above Lido's. Got my first gold shovel, so I'm excited about that. It's a pretty amazing project, it's going to be up to 100 employees, can really help the community, and help our healthcare system with readiness and the availability of that stuff made here in America, which is good. I think it's a $50 million investment by Owens and Minor, so that's, just goes to show that we, when we get folks into Mon County, no matter what they're looking at, they kind of fall in love with the place and understand why. So we're going to keep trying to bring folks like that here. I am participating Saturday in the Freedom Day at Mylan Park. I'll be a guinea pig in the dunk booth from 10 to 11. All proceeds go to a charity of my choice, which I will designate YCF to receive whatever penance that I earn for getting dunked over and over and over and over again. So come on out, it's a whole day from 10 to 8 at Mylan Park, and there's all kinds of events, it looks pretty amazing. Lastly, it's my middle child's 15th birthday today, so happy birthday, Julia, and she'll hate that I said that, but that's all I have.
Sean.
Since last, since our meeting last week, last Wednesday night, Commissioner Bloom and I attended a meeting with the Fair Board and Mylan Park Foundation to discuss the, this year's upcoming fair and make sure that the Mylan Park and the Fair Board know that what was needed from the county in regards to our Mon County Center for putting on a very successful fair. So it was a good conversation. Thursday, I had a tag up with a broadband consultant, and the rest of the weekend was pretty slow. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, I meet with Aquatic and Track Center Management and Club Mountaineer regarding Club Mountaineer's participation, and they're a vital entity supporting the finances of the Aquatic and Track Center. So their events are crucial to our finances for the center, so it's important that we meet with Coach Reggs and his wife to make sure they understand how important their participation is. In the afternoon, we have a commission, commission discussion with, it's finally getting to a point, we're going to have an HR discussion, or a discussion regarding our HR audit, so just the initial steps, but we are moving forward with that. Friday, we have staff reports. As Commissioner Arnett had mentioned, Saturday is Freedom Day at Mylan Park. I initially accepted also to be in that dunk tank, but I have a memorial service I have to go to in Wharton that morning, so I won't be able to make that. So, you know, thanks Jeff for taking one for the team. Commissioner Bloom offered to do pie throwing or something like that, he just doesn't, didn't want to do the dunk take, and so I hope they take you up on that. So Tom will probably be there throwing them at you too, Jeff, so most of the money that YCF makes will probably come out of Tom's pocket.
He's got that bum shoulder there, I'm not worried about.
He'd throw underhand.
I'm going to hire someone then. I'll sub-contract.
It's a wonderful event, though, all day at Mylan Park. There's events at our Mon County Center, there'll be a petting zoo, and that we're personally, or our staff are personally involved with, but there's events all day long, ending with a meeting, I'm sorry, a movie on the big screen at the track, I believe, at night.
Yes.
Do we know what that movie is? Say and tell us.
Captain America.
Captain America.
Oh, Captain, thank you.
Okay. So hopefully we'll have good weather and it's a good day. Monday is the 4th of July. I do want to thank the sheriff's staff, I see a couple people here, for the, they had the Todd May Golf Tourney this weekend, and I believe it was very successful. Thank you, thank them for putting it on. It's, I think this is the 10th year. I couldn't participate, but I did have a team in it, which actually won. So they did, they did well without me there. So thanks for all they do. Thanks again, Forrest, for all you're doing with EMS services. And Jeff, you mentioned your daughter's birthday. Today would be my brother's 69th birthday. As I've said multiple times, I'm number eight out of nine, but number one, he was my brother the oldest, he'd be 69 today, but unfortunately, he had a swimming accident while training for a triathlon. I believe it's been about, I think it's been about 10 years. No, it's been more than that, it's been over 10 years. And that happened on June 23rd, and his birthday is on June 29th. But a lot of people ask me because they see it on the trail, but if you go, if you start Star City and you go towards the Van Vours, about a half, about three quarters a mile in, there's a bench that has a memorial with his name on it. And a lot of people ask me who that is, well, that's my brother, because he used to live in a house about, the house that sits right at the end of Van Vours, right there on the river. So anyhow, that's all I have.
It was an eventful week, especially, and that's why I want to thank the sheriff's department and everyone else involved in the capture of the individual. I also personally want to thank, and I know we all want to thank, JR Petsco who came up also. We had to evacuate Chestnut Ridge Park, then we had to contact all the people who were coming in, and it was somewhat of a nightmare. And again, then we had asked the police, and they did do that, they stayed at the entrance, so no one came in and slipped by. So I really appreciate the coordination of all agencies to capture that individual. Second, as was stated, July 2nd, the county commission is, and also I want Cheat Lake Rotary to get credit, they are having the exotic petting zoo. Not just a petting zoo, but we went after the big time exotic petting zoo. I have no idea what that is, but it's exotic. So please, go over there and, and again, all this is free, and I think that's what's so great. I think it's a really good time to go over there, see the facilities, and see what is going on over there. Sunday, I was able to represent the commission over at Hazel's House of Hope, met the new representatives who are running the Salvation Army. They are real go-getters. I look forward, I offered for them to come in to meet with us. I'm real excited that I think they understand what the word "community" and "working together" is, and I really think that's going to help all of us in the long run. Along that lines, I'm also excited to say that we had a proposal yesterday that the board is going to ask, to look at, which is for the Hope, the Sobering, Hope Hill Sobering Center Board, there's so many boards we're on, and a sentence is offered to actually oversee, develop a plan, and then run it for one year. And I'm very excited about it. I've offered, I sent you all the just memo, memo of understanding, so just that you can see what it is, and then we will vote on that, but I'm looking forward to it. The other great news is, they believe they can have it up and running for when the students come back, WVU students, which is an unbelievable four to six weeks, so that's also good news. I'm going to ask one favor, and it's kind of unique. The amount of, when I'm out in the public, the amount of conversations I have on River Road about what can we do about it, and I said, "We can't put a weight limit on it." But someone came up with an idea, and I'm going to ask that we just put the signs up. And it just says, "Not suitable for large trucks." I think that might help, because what is happening is many of the GPS systems are going and still bringing those large trucks up River Road. I know DOH says they won't put a weight limit, they won't put signs up, but maybe I'm going to ask, if it's your permission, let's put up a sign that just says, "Not suitable for large trucks," and maybe that might stop some of the trucks who will then go around. I just, it's just-
Asking for DOH to put that sign up?
No, I'm asking for us to put it up. I think we're at a point now that the DOH is not doing it, the DOH won't do it, and I'm just asking that we put up, or I'll ask Westover, since it may be Westover's, I'll find out, if it's in Westover, if I may go, be allowed to go to Westover and ask them, again, "Not suitable for large trucks," that's all I'm asking. If that's okay with you, if I can find that out.
I have no problem with you going to Westover, and the state of Westover will put up the signs.
I believe that is Westover. If it's Westover, if I can go there then, and ask them to put it up.
I think once you get on, once it trips-
Gets on River Road, where are they going to go? They can't turn around, so.
Well, that's why we can get it before, right there, say, "Not suitable for large trucks," because it's become a nightmare, again.
They have that exact sign out on Easton, Easton Hill, the bottom of the hill.
Well, I'll ask Westover if it's not, I'll ask DOH again.
Because those big trucks were going, turning into that neighborhood, so.
Okay, I will ask Westover first.
I don't see why they couldn't put that.
I don't know.
Yeah, I know why, I know why they got that sign, but.
Yes. Okay, if you would allow me to pursue-
Because one commissioner complained about it enough, so go ahead, Tom.
Okay. I will pursue it and keep you informed with what's going to happen. If it takes, yeah, I will ask then Westover, then DOH, but I think it's a good idea.
I have a correction that we, maybe not a correction, but-
Sure.
Something else we need to add. On the fiduciary orders or the items that we took care of early in the meeting.
Yes.
The 30-day, or the timeframe that you gave was actually for the Dennis Winslow Allen Estate, not the McNeil Estate. But, I mean, I don't see, I don't see a problem with having time limits on both of them.
Let's put it on both, okay. So we can amend it to put it on both of them if that's acceptable?
I would be fine with that.
Okay, then we all amend it for both, to put 30-day, okay.
Okay, you need to make, somebody needs to make a motion to do that.
Yeah. I move to amend the prior motion to add a 30-day time period to-
The Dennis, Dennis Winslow Allen Estate.
Dennis Winslow Estate. That's the name, Dennis Winslow?
Allen, Dennis Winslow Allen.
Dennis Winslow Allen Estate, some-
Second.
Prop moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one final thing, I do want to say, please, I have a dog who is hysterical when fireworks go off, I understand, but we can't have fireworks from July 1st to July 8th. And I'm sorry, if you could, I mean, it's a weekend, I understand, it's July 4th, and that's no problem, but please, and ongoing, I get a lot of calls, I'm sure you do, please understand neighbors, and not only that, but individuals who have PTSD, who have a real difficulty with that. I would appreciate if they just understand that, you know, do it the weekend of the 4th, and please try and keep the fireworks for those celebrations only.
I agree, I lost a dog last year to fireworks, so. On a leash, fireworks, we were getting out of the car, on a leash, fireworks went up, he ran right underneath the car, and while, while in my daughter's hand, so.
Yeah, I think it's just something that we need to just be aware of. Any other?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
And it's 58 days to WVU beats pit.